Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to get started. I'd like to officially order the management of business to adjourn for Tuesday, February the eighteenth, twenty twenty five order. Now, so go.
Shannon Ripro?
Here.
Ryan Adams?
Here.
Luke Cannon?
Here.
Shannon Beadson?
Here.
Doug Fritz?
Here.
Mary Upper? Robert Farm?
Here. The project will have a form for first order of business as approval of the minutes. Everyone should receive the copy of the minutes for January the twenty first, twenty twenty five in the packet. There's only a collection of additions to the minutes to be received. If not, open floor for a motion.
Duncan Ripro.
A motion to approve the minutes received is a second.
Second.
Now, second. Any further discussion? Not a matter of.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Beadson?
Yes.
Luke Cannon?
Yes.
Ryan Adams?
Yes.
Shannon Ripro?
Yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes. Next order of business is the primary subdivision plant for freeways, the bootstraps, phase two, marking number one, six from our work session.
Uh, yes. This is, uh, as you said, freeways, uh, very close to, um, I think we have a couple notes away. Nine notes, say. No, we're through forty-two. Yeah, we remember them from being the thousand and one, so that goes from fifteen. Oh, okay. I thought, oh, great. No. My bad, I forgot to do some calculations. So, we don't take down? Fifteen through forty, fifteen through fifty-seven? Yes. Still forty-two, forty? Forty-two off? Yes. Hey, we've got thirty counts. Did you had another here about the cars features and? Yeah. Six hundred. Twenty-three. Four details. Street details. She changed that, right? We're talking up there. Yeah. The nice rest is that, right? Then we had new shoe. Three come on B D. All right, just like everything, I had some work session. Unless you all have any more questions? One thing I need, uh, while we're at it, so we can get all that.
Any questions or comments, any questions? Well, I'm happy.
Motion to approve the freeway and bootstraps phase two, uh, after we get all the signatures, that's what we need.
Yeah. You have motion approved of all signatures, I want to see this as a second motion. Okay. A motion set, any further discussion? If not, loud and clear.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Luke Cannon?
Yes.
Luke Cannon? Ryan Adams? Shannon Ripro?
Yes.
Mary Upper has joined us for the record. Do you want to note on this?
Anything's literally changed from what we did before.
Just, uh, just, uh, what we asked.
What you asked me to do, man. Oh, yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes. Next one on our agenda is primary subdivision plant for Markham Woods. Markham Woods, second phase from our work session.
Seven left on this one. Let's try to get everything out of you, dude.
Can you do anything else?
Well, everything I asked you to do has been correct.
Okay. Any question, you probably can, if you have.
Can we give us a kind of a solidation or something for each other?
Uh, there's a river there, up there on the, I think it's the northeast corner. There, we'll do a separate plan for that one. It's a large effect, so, yeah. We're good there then, we'll, I think, if we know torn down, it's a point there.
Okay, you have a question? Okay, not a whole lot.
I'll make a motion to approve the Markham Woods, uh, for seven of the whole signature.
Okay. Now, the motion to approve all signatures are three, is your second of the motion? Have motion set, any further discussion? Not a matter of.
Ryan Adams?
Yes.
Shannon Ripro?
Yes.
Luke Cannon?
Yes.
Shannon Beadson?
Yes.
Mary Upper?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes. Okay, next one on our agenda is primary subdivision plant for Lake Ridge, Phase Three.
You see the line? There's a nice act of licensees around the dish areas, and that pretty sucks, you know?
One question, come on up, first up, uh. It's not open for the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plant for that bridge, phase three, uh, receiving five signatures.
Okay. Our motion to approve this plant, thanks on the signature, just a second for motion. Same. Have motion set. Any further discussion? If not, we have a vote.
Mary Upper?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Beadson?
Here.
Luke Cannon?
Yes.
Ryan Adams?
Here.
Shannon Ripro?
Yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes. The next one on our agenda is primary subdivision plant for fourteen thirty, both for our road.
So, if you don't remember, this is a commercial building out next to, uh, the old one, talking about the road. There were problems with type, pretty much on this one. Well, there were problems with type, pretty much on this one. I didn't have my notes. No, I didn't have any, but we got, it's a really bad cover. You have to end it with one name. Yeah.
Order number, place for saving.
We still have another page, the list of, uh, things. Yeah, look on page, y'all have that first page?
Yeah.
As I, I just, the full set, it's got, page two, it's got the, all the signatures.
He's got all, all his, not that.
No, we don't have to do that. Well, they have the signature, the line, the page, again, right? Yeah, if you got some signature, sure. Thinking about everything except for the damage stats are still working on those. And get those before we get our, our station, right? Pretty common though. Feature, safety, deep up, some put up here. Yeah, I gave you the separate two from that one. And then I just, no left, fix some arrows on the one, just put it right here. Go back. Like we did. Can you get, can you go, go, some service, go to that one, say, you're like, sure. So, you got one real, like, way there. Better work that, like, yeah, on the politics of the, of the.
You have the same power, you have.
It's just, it's the, we do it at max. Yeah. Well, you should.
We need to add to that, but, uh, Howard Park opens on this. We say it's a, we now.
Well, we, you like that, that road before you could start construction. Right. We either already about to say that way, part of the fact, yeah.
Okay.
They said that's, we, we got nothing else.
Adam? Um. If not, then I'll pull the motion.
I'll make a motion, we should, uh, preliminary subdivision plant for thirteen thirty, both for our road, and then on the, um, gas line.
So, it's on there?
It's on there.
Yeah. The line is on there, we should, uh, we should get some.
Subvention on the, okay.
Should I motion to approve, depending on signature, is your second motion?
I'll second.
Have motion second, any further discussion? If not, we have a vote.
Mary Upper?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Beadson?
Yes.
Shannon Ripro?
Yes.
Ryan Adams?
Yes.
Luke Cannon?
Yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes.
Thank you. So, you had more, thank you.
That's it. Next one on our agenda is primary subdivision plant for Lima Meadow. You have a list, Dan?
Okay, now, remember, this was on last month's, um, business session, but we had a, I did talk to, to Matt the next day, yeah, and he had a family person come up, and he apologized. Uh, completely understood that you all, uh, wanted somebody to be here. There were a couple things, um, minor things, uh, one about utilities range easement, uh, and one about signature alignment. Both those things have been directed, uh, since the last business session. So, I probably had to, we asked, well, you all, uh, wanted somebody to be here. So, you did your approval, in case, if I had any questions, you know, the time to.
Would you have signature Roberts and Roberts, and then see?
I didn't see, right, with that.
No, the signature was, uh, a spelling error on the, the road part. We have it.
It's Roberts, excuse me.
So, that's kind of the most important one. So, Rob Farmer is the chairman of the planning mission, um, give you the last one, so you get your other signatures from your other, I think, little list here, and, uh, rather than the last one sign. That's it. Get better, teach.
I expect the.
Before you ask Rob.
Yeah, I appreciate it, man. Is he, uh, like, some, special interest? Do you have anything else?
No, he said, I bring on this.
If not, then I'll hold call for motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the subdivision plant for Lima Meadow subdivision with the, uh, condition of additional signatures required on the plant.
Okay, have motion approved, signature, please, or second for motion?
I'll second.
Have motion set, any further discussion?
Any kind of question?
Sure.
Um, there is no regulations that says anywhere that when we have ninety-one lots or whatever, that we need to connect for exit, right? There doesn't, any, any of our regulations.
This is what?
If we need two ra, two exits out of subdivision, we have this many, this many lots. There's nothing in the county that regulates that.
Uh, we've talked about that several times, but, uh, in our county, we have so much, uh, rigid development, which is hard sometimes to get the two entrances. Uh, we do require everyone to stay road, they have to get statements to prove it that you're qualified to law. That's a slight issue. Uh, if you? If not, I'll pull a vote.
Luke Cannon?
Yes.
Ryan Adams?
Yes.
Shannon Ripro?
Yes.
Mary Upper?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Beadson?
Yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes.
If you want to, if you want to add that signature, then get the rest of the signature to bring back to office. We'll be, all right, here, forty-five. Thank you.
The next one on our agenda is a subdivision plant for Tyler's site in Philly.
Yeah, so, uh, well, probably remember this, Shannon, you know, the, what was it, been here with that page on the last work session, but they presented you on the floor, we recommended that they go back, and in fact, they're quite ready. Uh, Tyler Dixon is here. Uh, I was kind of let you take it away and, uh, give your presentation, and then the board has these, uh, questions at that point, we'll keep them.
My name's Tyler Dixon, I'm a landowner, work there for farming, now, you know, licensing. We've been engaged, uh, on this project, the site work that helped obtain the conditional use permit last year, and I'm hyper, uh, seeking approval for phase one, um, of the development plan for the project. Uh, I was here back in October, and, uh, at the time, uh, you know, there was, it would, I would say it was a ten thousand foot view, especially with the utility situation where the, this project is unique, and it's my first completely off-grid project, so I can understand wanting some more information on your own thing. So, over the past several months, we've, uh, engaged several other consultants in the project, and feel like we have, uh, to a level that we can present it, uh, given the board confidence that the, the project will work. Um, and I'm happy to talk through any of the site-related work. Uh, as part of phase one, um, there are kind of two locations to improve, and the distillery is something inside itself, which, uh, you know, our scope on that is to manage the stormwater, uh, and detention requirements, uh, things of that nature, uh, the pedestrian vehicular access, uh, for, uh, visitors, employees, emergency vehicles. Uh, there is an emergency, uh, response plan, in case, that, uh, the manager is to the property, sits, uh, next to the whole place, very rich, actually river, so, um, you know, a, a good part of that entrance drive is within the floodline. So, if there is a, uh, hot water situation, there is a secondary exit on river, so, drive, exit property, but that, that, uh, exit is reserved strictly for emergency vehicles, no, um, delivery truck drivers, we can use that drive, sorry. Um, as part of, uh, uh, phase one, um, improvements to the existing entrance, um, are going to be part of, and, um, a safe route, so we'll, um, give, we'll, I'll see soon, make sure we're in, for that, for the requirements, and, uh, if the entrance, as it sits now, is outside of the floodplain, I'll drill here, uh, really wide, just to make sure, uh, get everything, before it gets there, uh, regulation. Uh, really, the main, uh, I guess, well, two main, uh, improvements to the entrance is to make it large enough so that when a delivery truck does, uh, come to the property, it will be gated, um, but for that delivery truck to be able to get completely off the safe route, allow blocking traffic to the river. Um, and, uh, we feel like we can perform all that work, uh, outside of the floodplain, but, like I said, we'll, we will engage the division wire and make sure, uh, you know, we're not encroaching on the floodplain.
So, I understand that the main entrance is going to be there, if, uh, the whole place, very bridge?
Correct.
Where, where you go, will cross on the ride, and, uh, that's what you'll be using for all your construction and all that, unless there's a water problem issue with the river, you know? Then you have, I'm assuming, up on top?
Correct. Yeah, there's a farm road that, uh, the, the property is pretty large, and so there's a farm road that runs the entire length of the property, and it, uh, it outlets onto, uh, it's River Circle Drive, um, which is, I believe, off car lane?
Yes. No, it's off, since, yeah. At least for y'all, good if they're rocking, if everybody, that was one of the conditions and issues for me. Now, because that area, if you go down there today, it's underwater. Um, it does, uh, to the floodplain, so the board just, one of the requirements was an emergency entrance, uh, or exit, really, in this case, to the property, in case that happens. Um, but they also restricted that emergency, just for that, so no construction traffic, no truck traffic or anything like that, because it is a residential area, they didn't want construction traffic traveling through the neighborhood to get to the property. So, all deliveries, destruction, everything will happen through the entrance that you're talking about, unless there's, uh, a flood again.
Correct, and, uh, the distillery will be, uh, will have fire suppression, will have a, um, an above ground, uh, tank for firewater, and we spoke to the, the fire chief, and he's approved, uh, you know, that as a, as a method for, um, the fire suppression. I've got Ian McConaughey, he's the architect for the project, uh, if you have any questions, you know, related to the building, and certainly a lot of the process items, and then also Will Davis with, uh, C and I Engineering, uh, Fuel, uh, if you have any questions regarding these, you know, alternative energy, uh.
Can you, can you talk a bit about that off the grid, or like, kind of, what you made me say off the grid, what?
We're not connecting the cave, we're not connecting the water, we're not connecting the gas. It's all going to be battery, solar power, uh, generator, low water, uh, iogas. Still getting anything?
Solar panels, one of the, I can understand very clearly, it's sound.
Correct, and these will be in, uh, a later phase, the, the solar panels, well, the first, the, the phase we're seeking approval for is just to get the distillery filled, but there are a lot of components, you know, energy-wise, that come into that, that are in the plans, that you have, uh, the solar panels come on at a later phase as they ramp up production, um, as far as the distilling goes.
And at the back of the package, there should be a, a kind of a chart that C and I have prepared that walks through the phases of the distillery implementation. So, uh, phase one is on the left, uh, so, the distillery itself, the program, that's one of the, for subphases, so you have, uh, phase one production, uh, which will be with propane, uh, power generator, which will go to the, the microgrid, uh, missiles. Right, so they, which, it gives a, a back and back, and basically a front-end brain that distributes the power correctly at the right time in the correct rates. So, basically the generator will feed the battery via the microgrid, and the microgrid takes that back to the building and other heat pumps on site that might be, uh, some of the miscellaneous pump sites, I just thought. Uh, so that's, that's phase one, how the power's being generated. That gets us up front, gets us off the ground. Phase two incorporates, um, some additional supplementary within the distillery system itself, that would be inside of the building, part of the distillery itself. Uh, that's an MGR system, which is heat recovery, heat and.
Yeah, I can get into the weeds with all this technical, uh, any questions about that.
And what it, the, the short version on it, the half of it, is that it basically allows the distillery process to operate much more efficiently, so that you can see a increase in, uh, production on the turn of your distil, the distillation itself, so you get more bourbon out with the same power in, because you're, the increased efficiency in the system by having this heat recovery loopable, you know, to keep it round, so you're not having to, uh, you basically pre-cut the water, think about this, and you're not having to go from zero to, every time you're on the boiler, you can go from half to half one. And then phase three is when we would be bringing in the anaerobic digestion and, uh, the solar power as the true, uh, pushing more on the renewable side of the energy production. So, uh, with the solar array, uh, and, uh, and the anaerobic digestion, just to explain kind of how, again, what that does, it takes the stillage waste from the distillery process and, uh, breaks it down, uh, which, it, 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 we've not cut it down, essentially, you're very, the end result is you have, you have free stream out of that, you have water, you have iogas, and you have the organic solids that you can then use as compost on the, in the farming, that he's going to be doing on-site for his grain production, because one of the components that's not really, uh, part of the development plant's mill, but that he is doing, is that he's producing as many grains as he can on site, uh, himself. So, he's had UK, um, uh, ag out there testing the soils with them, they're actually getting the test crop engine this season, so, yeah, if we're done inducing test crop, test runs this season, to see what it can really do, and what if we're right and it'll work well there or not. Uh, but, it, it's been formed, there's a lot of work he's got to do to build that soil back up. Uh, so, the anaerobic digestion's actually a big component, being able for, for him to be able to, uh, treat that good topsoil for his farm production.
There's a lot of rock.
Uh, it's kind of, it's harsh, so there, there is a lot of rock, but it's a bit sporadic.
You're not, yeah, yeah, we've got, so there, there's been previous geotechnical investigations, and at the time those were done, the, the distillery building itself was located in a different place. Uh, so, being that it is, of course, I mean, you get, uh, great variances to depth of rock in there, and so we've, uh, engaged the same people that did the, uh, the, the first geotechnical investigation to do, uh, some more exploration, because the, the distillery has moved, uh, the building has changed a little bit, uh, you know, just, it, it makes sense for both the owner and, and the site to, to get a better idea of what we're working with up there.
And moved about, maybe fifty feet, hundred feet southwest from where it was, not, not totally different site, but.
But, and, and as part of that, we've requested geophysical, um, uh, exploration, which, uh, will basically give us a better idea of where it voids are, uh, because we'll be detention and retention ponds on the site, so we want to kind of identify areas that are potentially at risk to develop sinkholes and navigate those as best we can, you know, on the front and, and the thing. So, uh, all that said, I mean, the, so the, the grading has some, you know, the site grading that you see on the plans, depending how this, uh, next round geotechnical investigation comes back, it could, you know, we could be doing some massaging to, to, to just work with, with the site better. Um, but, uh, yeah, it's a, it's, it's a very hard site, it's like, all, uh, kind of central Kentucky.
And if you go straight to me, it's on the same ridge as you are, with all kinds of rock, and.
Yeah.
One of the, some of these, if we just approve the night, uh, let's do some similar stuff, yeah, so.
The, the first, uh, report, I mean, s, there was refusal at less than a foot, and then some refusal at forty feet deep, so.
And, and additionally, there's also visible rock, and some of it, it's on there, so. But we're trying, part of that is so we can, uh, deal with the more surgical on our foundation system, so with cars, we have to have concrete piers and.
How would they fix crops?
Well, it will affect his ability, rolls, it's cold. Unless he's got rock, rock right at the surface, and not enough, uh, you know, room for topsoil.
But it's three hundred acres, is that right?
Uh, yeah, I think that whole property's, yeah, just, I'm just three hundred.
And those areas, we'll have some extra cut that he's planning to use to start that process where we do have low, um, topsoil.
Right, a lot of the, uh, you know, the initial kind of mass earthwork we'll do in the site, would, you know, the first thing is to stockpile all the topsoil, so we can use that as needed throughout the site, um, and then he can, you know, if there's excess, he can use it throughout the property.
Sure. Uh, so, while they're chewing on that, just a couple minor things, that's me on this, uh, first one about the phasing, so it, it didn't feel like there's any parking for any kind of visitors or anything like that during phase one, so that, so that doesn't have any phase one, but what about parking for, uh, employees, workers, construction people, that kind of thing, that would be a, a different spot, so then the park, because there will be a. That could be a, a different fox in the park because there's going to be a, there is very well with the cement around, I mean, what's that look like?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, so, and, and we can work through this. I mean, once you typically, you know, we have a construction entrance into the property. Property being the way it is, you know, a mild drought or whatever, but it's essentially a construction entrance.
Correct.
And then, you know, once they, once you're up the hill, where the distillery location is, I mean, there's, there'll be plenty of laydown area that will have drought damage. And yeah, any, any, any and all erosion control measures as far as sil fencing, you know, I, I don't think we need any check and answer or anything like that because we're at the top of the hill. We don't have a lot of water shifts. We're kind of the top of the watershed.
We're the one.
Right. So we'll be more concerned about what's running off the hill and trying to capture that.
Somebody seems to mind what they need, obviously. This is probably got me placing from something I sent.
Yeah, well, I think you gave me some comments last time on what they need to go on there. So I, if you have more comments.
If you, if you're not being paid, you don't get to be paying. You don't need.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, maybe across the property or something, sure. We can, we can read this back if you didn't before you break into file. I don't want you chasing down signatures that you don't think.
Right, right. So at one point in time, there was, I don't want to say some doubt, but there was maybe a need to connect to KU. And but I think we've gotten to a point where we're actually without questions.
Mr. Riffrow had a good question about one of your folks over here on C seven. About the community and the, the wells of Roman Strait. I know your thought process behind that, you want to be a good neighbor, you want to provide that. But it also mentions that the county would, would take over making so that, let me clean that up a little bit because the county's not going to maintain that unless there's an agreement between the utility districts. They get yourself water right out of the well because, because they're, they're a PSD regulated entity. So there will be some, some agreements that would have to be worked out there. I think he was just concerned that the county might be on the hook for that well. We need to try to clean that language up a little bit.
Yeah, and, and we can, you know, doctor that however it needs to be. And, and I didn't personally write that. And really, all that I know about it is that somebody reached out far.
And I, I just didn't get your water from you.
Yeah, and, and.
At one point, there was conversation about running a water line down there, I think. And maybe they thought, hey, we don't, they don't have water on Roman Strakes, right? There's no public water down there, body on the well. So I think that, like you said, it was a casual conversation, maybe turned into this note. But we just want to make sure that that's clarified. Shannon, I heard Shannon gets that.
Certainly don't want that.
So this is obviously new ground for us. I just knew ground for everybody. I'm, I'm confident that, that a phase one, the other plan, that, that, that they meet our regulations. They'll have to be follow-up conversations and follow-up presentations for phase two and phase three. But, but I'm comfortable with what I've got here for them to get started. But obviously that just gives us you all, if you have more questions or concerns or.
What they give us, is that adequate for you as far as the ways it's going to be phased in? And I would, I would think that my first phase would be get the roadway built for your construction, traffic and all that. Get your building site for your building, whatever comes first, the, the dairy or rick houses or whatever.
Yeah, I, yeah, so the first phase would be the, the entrance improvements, mostly that's part of construction traffic. So that we're not blocking the road. And then there are future phase road improvements, the interior road in the property. That probably won't happen until after construction of the distillery just because all this construction traffic just pair up.
But that'll be pre-public access, right? That'll be before.
Yeah, 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 yeah. There's not, and that's a good point, that's a great point. Public access is not going to happen until, I don't know.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's not happening. Anything would be collected, yeah, the visitor centers, it would be in phase two and phase three.
And for, if any of those future phases, we fully plan, you know, coming back in front of the works of the intent of this plan.
And we have to do, so we have a, the conditional use, we have a brick house we can do. And then we have to do a visitor center before we do any more brick houses.
Correct.
Is really state, anything, uh, is that actually that Mars will do something to the state, decide your department?
Well, there, the distillery building and the brick house will be, will be inspected at the state, I would just call it. If I would use a size now, I think.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll relay all of the site buildings, so they'll handle the building structures. But it, but, but that'd be part of the site development plan what they're going to do in phase two. It will be worked in, in during that process.
So the state will be, will they be inspecting everything as, as, as spilled as far as retention for spills?
Yes, yes. So section four thirty, CNBC is a distilled spirits warehouse. And it, it, it covers all the containment regulations and the, the distances between buildings. And also even with the distillery, it'll have to be reviewed by the state.
Right.
Because just of the nature of the building.
It's a.
All your, all your, you have to contain enough, it goes up in flames, you gotta contain that, because they're off.
The other question, maybe the ship's already sailed. What about, if, if, if this is your only entrance for construction vehicles, what about eighteen wheelers coming around those cars at the top of the hill? Is that?
It's the same highway. I mean, it's a wide road.
Not at the top, but if I'm thinking like above Boone's Trace, above that area, those cars will come around the top of, you know, right above the interstate there. I don't know how tight that is as far as, I mean, should it be signage or something?
We can regulate signage on state, I mean, but it is the state.
If there was an issue, they'd probably have to, whoever were getting the material from is telling them it's like a short truck or whatever.
Just think people coming in out of Boone's Trace, they're going to be meeting trucks right there, just carriages a lot, you know, and it's going to be, I think it's going to be tight there. I'm not saying they can't get through there. Maybe people just have to get used to it.
I would know for semis, I'd be in trouble there.
Well, they should.
Cross the bridge.
Can't get across the bridge, right?
But that's why we.
We're going to have semis going.
Getting a transportation there, it would make them, they need this wide enough to turn one around there.
Yeah, nobody working with the state on that project.
Yeah.
Hi, I have a question here. If you're going to have a lithium battery back there and that's going to be a pretty good sized one, does anybody have to inspect for any kind of spillage or rupture of that battery? If that lithium gets loose, it's made of aluminum.
I'm sure with that would be some, yeah, has all sunny gone with it or you probably roll what scenarios could happen and what would be the mitigating factors?
While those are the generation and transmission companies, usually they have to have somebody to look because of the size of them.
Yes.
If you're bringing something.
Yeah.
Can be definitely a lot of things.
Yeah, before that would be, hopefully there'd be a has all, so you can go.
Is that your backup power battery? Do you have the drum combustion stand by the generator?
So go, go, yeah, you got it. So as far as the anaerobic digestion, we're going to have a CHP, so it's a combined heat power generator. And what that's going to be fed is through the propane. Use that to feed into the generator and that's going to source the power for the distillery. Propane in phase one, then switch over to bio gas in the later phase when they open that gesture. But yeah, that is the plan for.
Can you show us where the propane tanks are?
Two, yeah, I'm sorry.
There should be.
Yeah.
The load next to the road.
Yeah. Yeah, those will be, we have two thousand gallons.
Yes, keep them under.
Under gram?
No, they're going to be above ground. They're going to be under that thousand pounds.
No, I, I want to see. Okay, so this is the, we have water.
Water, water.
So.
So this is our fire tank.
Yeah, your fire tank too.
And then we will have a separate water tank for processing, that's the water truly. We have a separate. It's going more to close numbers, just to take the heat off. Through the process. So going from the offer to the distillery, the straight line pipe, it's about seven hundred feet. And you're going to have about a hundred fifty feet of allocation.
Yeah, the well is actually on the access drive. So the water can actually, this is the access drive up to the site. What else?
Actually, there's a question about you on that access drive.
Can you tell you more about?
Yeah, just learn.
Everything about.
Maybe like the bolted levels, fire timing, things like that. We handle that on that first kind of gases we're managing. Energy use for the process. But anyway, yeah.
You see where it's going, you got to, you got to follow with the propane, that can't get the fire out. If the fire, we don't have a bomb, it's going to bring fire out.
What is, um, suited. So I don't know, maybe that's for phase one only and then it's that part of the later phases or maybe it does form part of it. What will grow or something does, it is more specialty.
More difficulty to rise of all that's around here is the, the Wisconsin, the idea.
And that basis, it must be a particular type of corn that you use or?
There, well, he.
Joe Coy, Robert.
Yeah, that's, that's. Yeah, there was a bunch of different like subspecies of corns. I understand that he's going to experiment with a bunch of different types. So I don't know what his starting strand will be, but.
Yeah, especially this, yeah, over, we're going to get it over, right?
Yeah. But yeah, there's a.
Yeah, great. If you ever had a question about the.
Yeah, my question was about the propane. So I've got the propane tanks over here, I've got the water to put a fire out over here. If the pump that is on that.
That, the fire pump for that water tank is a diesel-driven pump. It's independently.
Okay, it's not.
It's not.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Yes, that's a great question. That's a good question. And if you're ready, your final question. Yeah, it'd just be one of, I'm not sure the subspecies of corn that he's going to be using to start off day one. His plan is to rotate through different recipes. So he's going to experiment and see what grows the best around here locally and then go from there. So it could be changing seasonally to a great fox park.
I think the chairman gets first taste.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Before I sign you.
First barrel or first?
Is there any other questions or comments? Or anything else?
No.
If not, then I won't call the motion. Why are we motioning? We're, we're going to talk, uh, on the phase one.
You're going, you're going to make a motion, approval has been submitted for phase one, please.
Well, that's my question. If they put the phase two and three on that chart, but we're not approving any of that stuff. Yeah, and that's, that's a little, we've been, that's our internal phasing for how, how we implement some of the.
And, and if you like, then they'll leave those pages off of the final copy to submit procedures.
Yeah.
But they're not being voted on.
Yeah, just, those were trying to just give you enough information, understanding what we're doing on the process of energy side. I appreciate the info, we just need to get it out of the.
Yeah, for you.
So we're still all confirmed?
Were you asking?
It was his idea. I'm making motion, we've already decided to have a plan for a cased distillery for phase one.
Did you have a motion put for phase one?
And then on the second, for second six.
And on the second, okay, setting on the second. Second motion, have a motion second for discussion. Not while the.
Shannon?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Mary Apple?
Yes.
Shannon Riffrow?
Yes.
Fran Adams?
Yes.
Ilkie Ken?
Yes.
She made a ferry out of my rock farm.
Okay, vote? Yes, I said yes.
I can't come in.
Somebody push, I think somebody. See if it's the final.
Oh, we need to do it now, sorry.
I'll be following the motion to the chairman.
I guess I'll do that too, buddy.
Motion, John, well, how about?
All right, Mary Apple?
John.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
I'm sorry.
All right, I'm going to play you.
Yeah, man. I'd like to ask a little, like, if you're coming down really fast. Something, be safe.